Okay, everybody. Looks like we fixed our technical difficulties and we'll get going with the forum. Thanks again for coming. My name is Tim Calabrese. I'm the chair and we have a brand-new member just got appointed yesterday, Jeff Gilchrist.
How are you?
Everybody else can introduce themselves, rest of the planning commission.
I'm Shirley Clark.
And Octavia Lee.
And this is Jason Rasmussen. He's from the Mount Scottney Regional Commission. He's been assisting us.
Shirley Clark, what do you, what is your title? Shirley Clark, what is your title?
I'm a member.
Just a member?
So the format, I'll give you a quick rundown of how we got here. So I guess about two, two-and-a-half years ago, the Select Board tasked us with coming up with draft subdivision regulations. And so we developed some, and then about a year ago, we had an open forum here and we got some really good input from the community. And we, I think, the feedback we got, the negative feedback, was that the regulations were a little difficult to read, a little lengthy. So what we did is we pared down the regulations and we added a chart in there which shows you what is required for an application. And there's, so basically, the subdivision regulations, you have your minor subdivision, which is two lots or less, and that doesn't include the existing lot. So if you have, say, you have one lot and you want to split it off into two lots, the lot, the existing lot does not count. And for that, it would require filling out an application, and it's all spelled out in the draft regulations, and it would just need an approval by the administrative officer. It wouldn't go to a hearing. And then you have the major subdivisions, which are three lots or more, and that would require a hearing. And one of the things we changed is that we put in, very, very beginning, waivers. Basically, the Development Review Board can give a waiver for any part of the subdivision regulations, and that's spelled out pretty clearly in the beginning. So I guess what we'll do now, Jason is going to kind of go over each article, and then after each article, if anybody has any questions or comments, we'll wait to the end, and then we'll go to the next article, and then at the end, if there's any other questions, we'll do that. One thing also, too, is, so after this, we'll take any recommendations and consider them, and then it goes to a planning commission hearing. Well, first, the planning commission would vote on whether to send it to a hearing, planning commission hearing, and then if there's any major changes based on the hearing, we have to have another hearing. And then, once all that is resolved, we send it to the Select Board for their hearing. And they could either choose to adopt it, and then it's law, or send it to a town vote, which we would recommend, sending it to a town vote. For some reason, they did decide to adopt it without a vote. The town, the citizens can, voters can get a petition together, then you need 5% of the voting public, and then, you know, then it can go to a vote. So, so I guess with that, I'll leave it off to Jason to kind of go over each, each article.
So, Tim introduced me, but I'll do, I guess, just for clarity, I'm Jason Rasmussen. I'm with the Mount Scottney Regional Commission. And our job is to provide technical assistance to towns, so we've been trying to help the planning commission here with these regulations over the last few years. So first of all, the, just the purpose of subdivision is essentially really to just look at any new lots created, make sure that, you know, where I think we'll be focused on the basics, so, you know, is the access such that fire trucks can get in there? Is it going to cause, you know, drainage problems at the neighbor's house next door, or the road below it, or something like that? So we're really trying to keep this, believe it or not, we're trying to be simple. There's a lot of things statute requires, that's why this is a little lengthy, but this is relatively simple, believe it or not, as subdivision goes. So I'm going to try to hit the highlights here. I'm not going to certainly go into a lot of detail unless there's questions. So Article 1 is really just sort of the basic type of stuff, but a few, there are some copies over here of the regulations, if you want to grab one, if you haven't, please do. Essentially, any existing lots are their grandfather, no problems, but any new lots, if this becomes adopted, would have to go through an approval process, like Tim was talking about before, before he can sell it or build on it or whatever.
What page is that?
I am, currently, I'm on page 1. And I'm really trying not to get into a lot of the detail, but please stop me if there's questions. So that enactment and authority is really just that basic stuff I was just talking about. The Purpose section includes just a lot of language that I'm going to kind of skip over unless there's questions on any of that stuff. I think the most important thing to note in this Article 1 is, I'm going to move over to page 2, Section 1.4 is the waivers thing that Tim was referring to. One of the things we're really trying to do with this is to be as flexible as possible, recognizing there could be a large subdivision where a lot of these requirements would want to perhaps kick in. A lot of projects are not, and so this waiver section really allows for any procedural or any standard to be, an applicant could ask for a waiver, basically. So it really provides a lot of flexibility. It's up to the Development Review Board to, I should say, sorry. We had some comment from some lawyers at the Malibu Cities and Towns about, there's an appeals process, so any decision that comes around needs to have a way to challenge it. And so the planning commission can't review appeals. So that's why you're seeing reference to this Development Review Board. We added that in because we needed a board in town that could review these appeals. And this is the cleanest, easiest way to do it. I'm assuming that the Development Review Board are the same people as the planning commission. They would be basically two separate boards made up of the same people, probably. That's up to the Select Board to appoint them, but basically, they'd have the same hats. And we were originally proposing all this to be reviewed by the planning commission. I'm intending for it to be basically the same people, but they have to go by this different name just because of the rules in place. Are there any questions on, on what I said or on Article 1? That's...
I've got a question. Go ahead. I've got a question.
Sure.
Are you expecting a lot of growth in town coming up for you two years ago?
If you asked me a couple of years ago, I would have said no. If you asked me maybe two years ago with some of the pandemic-related people who are coming into town, I said maybe. At this point, I don't really know. We've heard, there's some, I've heard some talk of, I forget what it was, 20, 30 lot-type of a subdivision, so it's possible, but I wouldn't expect a lot of growth. But you never know. You never know.
A lot of it's house-by-house, we're seeing. I mean, we are seeing slight increase, I would say, in development.
Yeah, in general, in this region, over the last 20 years even, we've generally seen just, you know, a couple of lots at a time growth, with the exception of, um, now.
And a lot of, we're also, we're trying to be proactive, so it's, something did come in, a project that, you know, the town was unified and the objection to it, you know, we have something in place.
You need bigger law, yeah.
And I think, you know, we'll get to it, but we were, I think my charge was to try to keep this as simple as possible for the one in the two-lot subdivisions, and then the bigger ones would have a little bit more of a rigorous review. Was there a question in the back?
Yes, it's a dramatical issue. In your opening paragraph on the third line, you say, "There is hereby established a subdivision by law." And I would, I would argue that bylaws are too, so there is hereby, there are hereby established bylaws.
Thank you. I need a good editor.
This is a document that shouldn't be medically correct.
I agree. Thank you for that. Anything else?
I've got something. On 1.2, Section Letter I, how does town contribution of energy and utilization of renewable energy sources, are we looking to put in a copy of the solar farm here or really?
Tim, I don't remember.
For labor, private use, is that what the document's wrong with?
I don't remember that there's standards about.
Yeah, it's for the...
It just says, "small," doesn't say big or small.
Yep. You know, I don't know that there's any standards that relate to that. In theory, you know, you could look at sort of what, if there's a big subdivision, what, how are the roads laid out so buildings could take advantage of southern exposure or something like that? I mean, in theory, but I don't think there's anything, I think that's just sort of a purpose statement in there, but there's really no standards that relate to that, if I'm not mistaken.
You have a question?
I might be putting the cart before the horse, but is the town prepared, as far as infrastructure goes, to be able to take on any large developments that might come down the road?
You know, in terms of, like, building the actual roads?
Building the roads, covering the snow removal, covering power, everything that goes along with it, because when you add a development or somebody does bring something large, it's going to take away from what we already have. And I'm just curious, has there been any surveys done to see if our infrastructure can handle it? I mean, we're going to need somebody to do the inspections, I would imagine, prior to, after a development goes in. I mean, are we prepared for that?
Yes, we are. We're talking with the Regional Planning Commission, that would be up to the Select Board to do the, to be the administrators. Terms of, like, road construction and things like that, I mean, the town won't do that. They will not build the road, and they most likely will not maintain it. It'll be up to...
Well, they can't maintain the birds right across the, well, we're down the road with the cabbages. They can't even maintain that.
Yeah, typically, the, you know, the contractor would build the roads, but if it's a homeowners association, they would, they would...
That should be maintained, yes.
Yep.
I just, I just meant infrastructure, that's all.
Sure.
Something to be considered, that's all.
And I do think, you know, when we get a little further on in here, there are some, you know, if it's a large development, there's, that's part of what we look at. So can the town handle water or sewer? Please, whatever. So I think that, that would be part of the review process.
Okay. Are you expecting a large development coming in here to do something that we're not aware of?
You know, they do pop up, and then they, sometimes they go away, sometimes they, you know, they move forward. But, yeah, we're not expecting one imminently, but, you know, we're planning for the future.
Preparation.
Yeah.
Anything else on Article 1 before we move on? Okay, so Article 2 is really about sort of the procedures. And again, I'm going to kind of try to hit the highlights, but stop me if there's questions. So we have two classifications. We have the minor and the major. Tim talked about this, so basically, the creation of two lots is a minor, and that's going to be a much simpler, faster process, that would be an administrative review function. So generally speaking, you could get your answer within a month, relatively quick. The major subdivisions are going to be three or more lots, and that's going to be, like Tim was saying before, the board's going to review it, there's going to be a public hearing, and it could be a little bit longer process. Usually, you know, it's going to be probably a couple of months at the shortest. This is usually how that works. Boundary adjustments are going to be exempt, so if, you know, if you're not creating any new lots, you're just kind of shifting a lot line over here or over there, that's exempt from these regulations. Again, we're just trying to focus on the most important parts of this stuff. So there, we're, we talk about it here, and then in the next section, we have a sketch plan review phase, and then we have a final subdivision review phase. The idea with sketch plan review is really just try to get some informal feedback from the board before, basically, anybody spends money on surveyors and other stuff like that. The hope is that it makes the process go a lot smoother and ultimately, maybe a little cheaper for an applicant, so that they can get some feedback upfront before they really start that, that process. The application materials for sketch plan review can be pretty simple. You know, it can be like a tax map that you draw, or there's some online mapping tools referenced here that you could use, and that has some of the, you know, wetlands and some of that kind of data that you could play with. If you don't know where to find it or how to use it, the idea is that this administrative officer, whoever that is, maybe somebody from my office, would help you through that And then this also talks about what are the application materials required for final subdivision review, and that's a little bit more extensive, but again, there's always that ability to ask for a waiver. Like, this does not apply to me, do I really need to submit this? So you'd have some flexibility there. The purpose of the table is to try to clarify that a little bit, and I would want to reformat the table to maybe fit on one page, to be a little more easy to read, but anyway, that's what that is. So on page 8, it starts talking about the sketch plan review. I already mentioned this before, but there's two levels of sketch plan review. So if you're a minor subdivision, it's recommended. If you're a major subdivision, so that's three lots or more, it would be required. Generally speaking, what that looks like is, again, you have a fairly simple, prepare-yourself type site plan. It would be put on a meeting of the board, the next available meeting. The board would review it with the applicant and really provide some feedback. And ultimately, there would be some written recommendations that are not binding, but they would give, you know, the applicants, so hopefully, some clear guidance, so that they can provide or prepare a final application in the most efficient way. If, if you're going as a minor, if you're going through that, you've not been meeting with the board, you would meet with the administrative officer, and it's a lot, it's quicker, but you basically get the same kind of written recommendations. So that's that. Any questions? Yes?
Do you want to put that in minor subdivisions, three lots? Is there any size, it all fell big and loose last week, or is there, it doesn't matter?
You know, Havannah does not have zoning, so there's, there's no standards on lot size or anything like that. I think they would probably be looking at, you know, is it reasonable size for the intended purpose, but other than that, there's no size limit. It could be as big or as little as, as a person would want, for the most part.
And the subdivision regulations, they don't control or regulate the use of your property, so that would be zoning. So this doesn't, this doesn't...
It doesn't go there, that, no, it doesn't go there.
Yes, sir.
Tim, I think, under Title 2, Major Subdivision, it appears that if you have a single parcel, you subdivide two more lots from that. You've created major subdivision because you've created a total of three lots, three parcels.
If there's an existing lot, that doesn't count.
Well, it doesn't say that here. So again, in the interest of...
We'll look at that. The, I believe their intent is that it would be...
Surely we'll look at it.
Yes. Bill, that is our attention.
I would make your intentions clear.
Three lots or more, and that doesn't include the existing.
Well, I have another thing.
Yes.
I would greatly appreciate it in the future, and I think so will many of your constituents, if you make further revisions to this document, that you italicize or print in a different typeface the preceding language or the succeeding language, so you identify the original and the proposed change, much as they do with legislation.
Yep, we do have copies of that. We have, we use it amongst ourselves, but if you would like a copy of that, we could certainly...
I think that the public is entitled to every document that you use yourselves. I do, absolutely. This is what's known as an open meeting law, which regards public documents, and I assume that everything you do is public documents.
Yes.
It's a legal issue, again, I stress it out, this is going to be a very big legal issue.
We know it.
And that can be made available if...
Yes.
Folks want.
Yes, sir.
Another, I may be putting the cart before the horse, but would it be possible, although we have no zoning, to have suggested lot sizes, so we don't have someone coming in and putting houses on top of one another, or? That would have to be gone over at the time of the plot plan when they put that out, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, if you're an abutting neighbor, you have a chance to come to the hearing and, you know, be heard.
Yeah.
So...
Does that mean?
But I'm saying, just for example, if the abutting neighbor is an elderly person and can't get out to a meeting and all of a sudden has four houses going in next door to them on a, you know, a two-acre parcel, that's all I'm saying. Is there any way that we could put into this a suggested lot size? That's all.
Subdivision can't really do that.
Can't? Okay.
Yeah, that is a zoning thing, you know, can you, can you merge zoning and subdivision together into a unified bylaw? Yes, but we weren't going there. We weren't thinking of zoning, no, this part.
That's why I said suggested, that's all, not zoning, we don't have it, but a suggested lot size.
Well, we could talk about zoning at the end, but, yep.
No, it's not.
Yeah, no, we have, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Again, I'm trying to hit the highlights, so if there are questions, as you go, please stop me. I guess one other thing I just want to highlight, so for the final subdivision review, so the minor's going to go through the administrative review function, so there's no hearing, it'll take about a month, done. For the major, you're going to have that public hearing, the board's going to review it. After they close the hearing, they have 45 days to weigh the decision, you know, and that gives, then there's a clock for the appeal process, so another, you know, period of time, and ultimately, you know, you get that done relatively quickly. Like I was saying before, it's usually two, maybe three months period of time. If, if it's a larger subdivision that has some roads or some other things where there were some conditions of the approval, there is a time limit that those improvements, again, so let's, let's imagine a large subdivision where there's an access room, and the condition is you've got to build it to standards. So you'd have two years to do that, but if they needed more time because the contractor wasn't available, or, you know, whatever it is, the administrative officer could extend that time period by an extra year. So again, we're trying to build in some flexibility for those sorts of eventualities that may never happen, but we want to sort of imagine that, that we're, we have the right tools in case it does.
No question. I thought the point of view with the major subdivision, the Act 250...
So you are a one-acre town at this point in time, so, you know, relatively small projects, is it?
I think it's five, five or six.
Five or six.
Five or more. Yep, five or more lots, required Act 250, perfect.
Are there any other questions on Article 2?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about, under the act, if you're delivering, you're telling people they're taking much of their land at all prior to any of these application processes, is that right?
So again, we don't want to get into the use thing so much, but it's, if, we don't want, we want the subdivision, if somebody's creating a new lot, we'd like, the rules would want you to come in and get approval before you sell it or build on it, or that sort of thing. Does that answer your question? Or is there some language that you don't like in here?
Well, this seems kind of awkward, it's too weird to do it that way, but...
Any other questions on?
A lot of people, you know, want to slowly work towards that type of thing, planning on the subdivision. You know, they may not hire a contractor or have a forest department in there for all that stuff, or for...
I think, you know, please correct me here, folks, you know, my thought is that the subdivision bylaws would prefer that, you know, the lot is created through this approval process first, and then, then it could be sold, it could be built on, it could be cleared, the driveway could go in, et cetera, but, you know, you'd want that approval first.
Right.
And they wouldn't really want to do the work, too, if it was in a situation where it could be approved for some reason. If it was really far inland, you couldn't get a road in, there was issues like that, and you're already clearing, and trying to subdivide it prior to actually making sure that it could be subdivided. So I think it would help just to get, even a small one, just go through, a small plan review and say, "Yeah, thumbs up, go for it."
I understand.
And you would also want to do perk tests at well locations to see if the land would be capable of holding a septic system, and, so...
So all the engineering should be pretty well in place.
Not, not necessarily, no. I mean, you may want to do perk tests before you come in for a sketch plan review.
Also, you also have to buy it without having a perk test.
That's right.
That's good, yeah.
That's right.
You've got to do your own work at that time, yeah.
Exactly.
So I, I think you can get a mortgage or anything like that with that perk test.
Any other questions?
Okay, so let's, let's move on to Article 3. So this is where the standards are. So at the beginning, on page 11, there's a table that just tries to summarize which standards apply to minors versus majors, but the real detail is on the next pages. And again, I don't want to go through any level, crazy level of detail, but this is saying that, so for large lots, 50 acres or more, you know, a full perimeter survey would not be required. Thought is that that's expensive, so they don't look at the, where are the new lots, you know, down in this corner or whatever. That part would get surveyed, but you didn't have to do the full perimeter survey, because that gets expensive. If you've got a 49-acre lot, again, there's that waiver provision, right? There's always that flexibility built into this. Lot shape, so basically, the idea is that you, we don't want any really weirdly shaped lots. Get that, that. You know, and you can go down through the list, corner lots, you just want to make, the idea is that you want to have, you know, reasonable front yard setbacks from the roads, you know, you have good sight lines at the corner and all those sorts of details. There's this topic preservation of existing features, historic sites, old cellar holes, stone walls, steep slopes, that sort of thing. So forest land, agricultural soils, again, the idea is trying to protect those things as much as we can in terms of how the lots are created. Stormwater, so, you know, I think probably one of the more important considerations... Stormwater, so, you know, I think probably one of the more important considerations is if there is a subdivision going in, you know, what's the impact on the neighbors or the town road below it going to be? So like, let's look at the stormwater and make sure that there's adequate ditching and that sort of a thing. Roads and driveways, probably the other, one of the other more important parts of things. So this is referencing the town road and bridge standards and certain other retrans standard sheets that generally would apply to these roads, and roads in general couldn't be, according to this, on average, more than 12% grade. Again, there's waivers, there's extenuating circumstances. Driveways, I think it's 15%. And, you know, goes down through the list, you know, if public facilities and services, so, you know, ideally it'd be good to have some level of review from the fire department, from water sewer departments to make sure that there's adequate services to handle the development. If not, that could be part of the question before, there could be some phasing, or there could be some other things that might enter into play. It's probably not going to happen unless it's a really big development. And again, at the bottom, page 14, there's that waiver, so, again, I'm just trying to highlight that there's a lot of flexibility, because a lot of these standards don't necessarily apply in a lot of smaller subdivision cases. Are there any questions on any of Article Four? Yes?
I don't know if this has anything to do with this subdivision, but what if a building went in and then there's wastewater starting running off into the river after the house was built? Is this anything to do with what?
I think that's more of a, like a health officer thing, where, you know, it'd be a failing septic system, and I'm not that well-versed in that, but I think that would be a different process. Are there any other questions on Article Four?
Disappointment.
Pretty helluva here.
Yep.
Somebody just put in a broadway, 15%. It's going to exclude quite a bit of property.
I know.
I think that's more extreme than that, so...
Yeah. The, it's that, that driveway, it grades on driveways, I'm not going to list the properties, but there's a number of them that, that they took, probably the cheapest and easiest way to do, and they're steep, and they cause problems for the town road crews because they don't have, don't have proper wire bars. They, in the cases that involve culprits on the driveway, that's kind of town responsibility, they're undersized. And, you know, they're supposed to get the driveway permit from the town manager, go out and sort of check. I started using the word survey, open survey, as in using a surveyor, survey the situation, and before they give the permit. This is what brought this up, the fact that people were pretty much doing what they wanted, which is fine, except when it starts to affect the people that have to drive the road. I understand now, for sure, your neighbors, wherever the water may go or whatever, but that's going to exclude a lot of properties. Well, maybe, I'm sure some. I've seen some rules proposed, though, where you look at the people and say, when you build, how are you going to get us a concrete truck up there? How are you going to get a fuel oil delivery? How's the fire department supposed to get the, how about an ambulance? Just, we don't have a lot of them, but they're out there in the town, places where you look at them.
On one.
Just look at them, just look at them and say, what were you thinking?
You don't want to be on top of the hill, right, Chuck?
I, yeah.
There's hills everywhere.
Yeah. It's often ways...
I see school buses, school buses going up the hill, maybe over here on Mill Street, through the, under the underpass.
They've been doing that for years.
I see tractor trailers and town trucks going over the bridge. Isn't there a wing living over there?
Well, yes.
Yes, but they're going nowhere.
Well, of course, when the roads are posted for, which they are in the spring, what are you going to tell people? Can't get a few oil delivery? You're going to let them?
No, you're going to tell them that. I'm not going to tell them that, you are.
Well, we can't, can't tell people.
You're the town, right?
Yeah, there used to be a recommendation, when March would come along, that people top off, top off their tanks in preparation for the month. Those days are gone.
The Bushes that do it, I don't know.
Fire trucks, of course.
Kind of giving you a comparison of road gradients, like Route 100, Terrible Mountain, that last steep pitch coming down into the Lago, that's 12%. It's pretty steep.
And also, when, when, sorry, Betty, go ahead.
Sorry, can we make a, there were four conversations in this room, and you can't hear. Could we respect the person that's speaking and ask the audience to stop speaking? Would you guys please be off the back while we see what happens?
Yes, yeah, if we could, if everybody could kind of be quiet, it's a little difficult to hear. Be like a school teacher. But we could also, to the grading point, you could also, if there's a certain property that really has, it's tough to work around, we could do a waiver, we could look at it at that unique location and say, okay, it's 15%, it's going to be 16% or 17%, we're not going to get that, that, you know, under that gradient, but it's the only access, and we don't see much impact, so we can, we can take it as a case-by-case basis, and we can look at it as a waiver, too, and that's the point of having waivers in there. If there's something that we really need to look at, we could take a look at it like that. That's right.
Yes.
As a landowner, property owner, I would say I want to subdivide my property, I do, just for two, two lots. What are the costs going to be as far as the actual permitting costs that I'm going to have to pay to the review board of the town?
I don't believe, I've had that conversation of...
I've looked into it a little bit, I mean, we do have to come up with an application, and then what we're going to do is we're going to look at, like, surrounding towns that are similar, like Redding, Mount Holly, and see what their fees are, and go with that. I mean, they're not going to be exorbitant, but we're going to go whatever the fair market value for permit fees are.
We're not talking...
No, 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 not at all. It'll be the, probably the cheapest part of subdividing.
Yes, you know, it's up to the select board to establish those fees. Nearby towns, you know, there's typically like a hundred or a $200 application flat fee, then there's usually a per-lot fee on top of that, and that can be $20, $50. Blood goes a little higher, but, you know, probably we're talking on the lower end of the spectrum. And usually there's a recording fee, 25, 30 bucks, something like that, but, you know, you're talking hundreds of dollars, not thousands.
Correct, yeah.
Probably. You know, as far as, as far as town regulations go, we've had, for a long time, like 50 years, building permits required. I'd say that not very many additions and things have building permits attached, and it's still enforcing.
It's illegal, you don't have an ordinance, you have an ordinance, but the ordinance itself is illegal, because you don't have an adopted land use regulation of zoning.
You don't have an adopted what?
Land use permit law. You don't have zoning laws now. You still have to require a building permit. You have more jurisdiction. You have jurisdiction on driveways connected with public roads, so the town itself is in violation by insisting, by hiding one of the building permits, and then realizing for years it was only 10 bucks, and what? I think it's...
Well, that is really to notify the listers, anyway.
Yes. You are correct, Ralph, that the building permit, it's not a legal document.
It should be ignored. Those people say, oh, what the hell, it's only 10 bucks, so why bother?
Well, it gives the tax assessors something to go by.
Well, that's their problem, isn't it?
Well, if properties aren't getting taxed at the rate they should be from getting new development, you know, new houses going up, and the listers don't know they're there, then the town's losing income, and we're having to pay possibly more taxes.
I don't want to get into the exact marketing, but I am a former town manager, I'm a select board member. I was one of the select boards, now we're ready to reuse the plan, we should stop. And I don't say that we're not at all, but I understand the driving force. There is an irresistible impulse to try to regulate everything that you can't do yourself. And I think you should think about that. I think stool, open your mind, that's the way to go.
Done, yes, all right. Well, I mean, we're...
Let me develop this a little bit further, if I may, if I may, please.
Sure.
With emergency vehicle access, that issue was always thrown out as a red flag. That's one that every dog will chase, not at all. So why not say to the emergency services when people, when they notice people starting an obstruction on the project, or based on the illegally gotten building permit application by the town, say, look, let's take a look at your driveway clearance here, if it's beyond certification or service too sharp, in that in arriving, notify them that you're hoping to deny emergency services to that project on the following grounds. Let the fire department take care of that.
Okay.
We have, we have myriad rules already, we have Act 250, which is referencing that limits private subdivision parcels for the one-acre town. Now, we should add to that that if you, if a landowner develops more than five acres from several, several different properties, and they all go out at the same time, every parcel counts to the five parcel limit, okay?
Within a certain range, I think it's five miles?
Well, whatever it is, so most towns are not, not much more than five miles in any direction. There's, there's a lot of logic behind a lot of the, probably, because there's a lot of expert help that's there to create the roof. It's an industry, and you know that.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is applicable, I've been delivering fuel and oil for 20 years, and the companies are, and many of them, for them, are taking to refusing to make deliveries to bad driveways, and we're expecting all the bridges for safety because there's been so many problems, and we just, you say goodbye to customers, and they have to find somebody else, and sometimes they can't find anybody else. And that's appropriate, and that's for big projects. So it's a deterrent, so if somebody comes up and comes to, you know, one of the larger companies, or even the smaller one, asks, you know, to do a site evaluation, we'll say no. There is some, you know, granted, it's private sector enforcement, but that policy exists.
Are there any other questions on Article Three? So I'm going to go through Article Four here real quick and see if there's any questions or comments on that. So this is basically the administration and enforcement part of things. So this establishes, this is administrative officer. You know, we've had some preliminary conversations, but if this is, if this has legs, if this gets adopted, we'd need to figure this out fairly quickly. I think the idea is that somebody from my office could potentially serve this function for the town, and we'd want to have adequate agreements in place and make sure that there's oversight and all that kind of stuff, but that's, that's the idea there at the moment, but we have to work out the details with the town manager and so... I mentioned this before, so the planning commission is going to be, prepares this, the town plan and other things, and the concept here is that there would be a new development review board that's basically the same people, and that's the board that would do the application Application fees, we talked about this before, it's not been established yet, but more than likely it's going to be in that hundreds of dollars range and not the thousands of dollars range this allows for, but doesn't require that the select board could think about, you know, if a lawyer is needed, or if an engineer review is needed, you know, could there also be a provision for those, or a fee that would help the town pay for that sort of thing? It's optional, and it's up to the select board to determine how that would work. We talked a little bit about this, so when, when you have a major subdivision, you need to have a public hearing, you know, this kind of spells out in a lot of detail what that process looks like, and I'm not going to go into the details unless there's questions. After the hearing's closed, within 45 days, the board needs to make a decision, and they need to write it, they need to have it in writing, whether that's a separately written decision, or whether it's in the meeting minutes, it's up to them how they want to do that. Again, I'm not going to dwell on those, those details. This talks about enforcement, enforcement is not easy, but this does talk about how that would work, and, again, I'm not going to go into too much detail here, it's basically just talking, it's right out of state statute, for the most part. So there's a process to challenge any decision, so any action or inaction of the administrative officer is, is an appealable offense, potentially, so if you're, if somebody doesn't like what the administrative officer did, they can appeal that to this board. If the decision of the board is something that somebody wants to appeal, that has to go to court, and so this spells out how that process would work. And essentially that's it, so, you know, the recording requirement, so after the decision's been issued, there does need to be a MyLAR, we call it, you know, it's a subdivision plan on this clear MyLAR material, it needs to be signed by the chair, and then it needs to be recorded in the town office. So that's what really finalizes the decision, and that's what's talked about there. Yes?
Concerning the administrative officer, has Jason, has you ever really done this in any other town, or just, you know, you say, maybe your office can take this over at now?
Yeah, we've done it on a temporary basis, but yes, we've done.
Is that kind of a full-time job? The vibe is just, is what that would kind of cost in town? Is it an hour or maybe, or is...
We haven't had that conversation, and we need to have that discussion. Hopefully, the fees help pay for the position. It's really hard to know what kind of time, you know, constraints are involved with this, because we don't know what happened, you know, it could be nothing for months, and then it could be all significant amounts of effort. We haven't figured out the details yet.
Have you been successfully, been able to do it in our town since?
Yeah, we usually have some kind of an agreement where we say, you know, it's not going to exceed this amount per month, or per year, or whatever, unless something comes up, and then we talk, and then we talk about it, so, yeah, we have to work those details out.
So just as an example, you said we've done it to other towns, we would be charged to other towns, just as an example.
Well, it's been a few years, I mean, we, we were doing this in Windsor, we did it in the Weatherfield for a time, and, you know, we, so we have sort of our, our actual costs, and we would build a town, our actual cost up to a certain amount, and I don't honestly remember, I think when we did it... So, well, so Windsor was a number of years ago, things were cheaper then, I think it was, you know, it might have been, we did it for maybe seven months, I think it was, I don't know, $5,000 or something. I can certainly find those details, but I'm not looking into it, I'm just asking you a rough idea. Yeah, you know, it's really hard to know, I think it's going to be really dependent on how many applications you do, and, you know, hopefully it's not a lot, you know, we hope it's very manageable and not expensive for the town, but we won't know until... We hope it's very manageable and not expensive to the town, but we won't know until we get into it.
I just have one more question based on that. You mentioned that it would be temporary. Is it, I want to be one second in the other town who kicked this over?
We were doing it for these other towns I mentioned, we were serving as the zoning administrator on a temporary basis until they could find a new permanent person. It could have been permanent, but it wasn't. They wanted to have their staff, which is fine, and we were just helping them through that, the gap.
What if we didn't want to have our own person?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. Yeah, as long as it's working for us in town, yes, absolutely. Any other questions on that section? Is that all right? So, you know, I'm not going to say much about the definitions, but the definitions is sort of the last article. If there's any questions, comments on that, I'm more than happy to field them, but it wouldn't be really the highlight for you on that. Anybody have any other comments, questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to add, because definitely you mentioned, as far as having some, I think it's going to be imperative that we have some due to the follow-up, because I've been on boards, I've been on planning and zoning, and people say, here's what we're going to do. And then after they get the whole rolling, they do this, this, and this, which were not in their original plan. I think it's going to be imperative, and if we do get someone that comes in and buys up a big parcel, decides to put in a bunch of, a bunch of houses, mini houses or whatever, which is something that we can follow along, I think that's going to be imperative.
Yep, I agree. So, moving forward, we're going to discuss, in our next meeting, we'll discuss all everything, everybody, all their comments and, like I was saying, they'll go to the hearings, and then ultimately, it's up to the voters whether they want to accept this or not. And if it gets voted down, then that's it. It'll probably come up again in 20 years.
So is it going to be a town, why voting?
Yes.
Of?
Yes, well, that's what, it's up to the select board, but I'm pretty sure they, I mean, we would recommend that they vote in town's vote, so.
In state law, the select board is authorized to adopt it themselves, but I think they also have an option to send it to town meeting to have an adoption vote then and there. I believe that's where they're going with this.
Yes.
Makes sense.
So our timeline, I mean, we're, if everything goes through, probably the next town meeting, we'll come up for a vote if it makes it that far. So the planning commission have any other comments or?
No, they're, my email said this meeting started at 6:30, so Shannon's, not that change.
From me?
No.
Probably from me. I don't know, I apologize.
Well, I'm sorry for coming in 25 minutes late, but Shannon and I were on our time.
All right. Well, I guess that's it. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. We appreciate all your comments and concerns, and we'll see where this goes. There you go.